Luck for you that gets bad for.
There's no way to know until you get it.
Yeah.
So we're waiting for Vicki and Ken. And Ken said he was coming in person. So. Um. Yeah, you have a quorum. But why don't we give him two more minutes?
And Laura, this is Sally. Would you like Mark Weaver to be elevated as a panelist?
Um, no, I think he's, if he wants to speak, we'll get him to raise his hand.
All right.
Thanks, Sally.
Derek, you gonna sell your house down here or keep it and rent it or?
We're debating. The market's been so good here, it's kinda hard to let go of property.
I know.
The market up there in Anchorage has been really good as well, so we're debating.
Rent it out and if you hate the job, you can always come back. Otherwise, you gotta start all over again.
I know.
Well, she's gonna be there. She's got four years before she retires, so we're just gonna hang out.
Sure.
Live it up.
Maybe by then you come back. They're a lot less expensive and that's possible.
Yeah.
This market's never gonna stay like this at 2%.
It's possible too.
I don't think anyone.
But we're also debating on building a cabin up there too, so if we do that, we'll sell here.
So we are just waiting for Ken. So whenever you want, John, however much time you wanna give Ken.
He asked for two minutes. It's only one's gone by.
Dave, are we on or ready to go? He's here. He's here. Let's call to order and roll call for the meeting of Woodland Park Planning Commission, March 11, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with Ken Hartsfield.
Present.
Lee Brown.
That's Kathy Lynn.
Lee Brown?
Here.
Al Bungy?
Here.
Ellen Carrick?
Here.
Eric Disman?
Here.
Vicki Good?
Here.
Larry Larson?
Here.
John Devoe?
Here.
Thank you.
Yeah, next item is the approval of the minutes of February 25th. Anybody have any comments, changes? Anything you'd like to talk about? And if you don't, we're looking forward to a motion in a second.
My motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Same sign opposed. Carry. Are we ready to go for the public hearings? Okay, we've got two cases tonight. The first one is sub 2021-01 extension of the Haven at Paradise preliminary plat, a request by JR Engineering applicant and Andrea Rodriguez, property owner, for a two-year extension of the primary plat, preliminary plat, approved for a 35.77 acre parcel north of King's Crown Road for 24 residential lots in the suburban residential zone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if I could get the PowerPoint screen up on the TVs, thank you. There we go. Look at that. All right. So, Mr. Chairman, I have a very brief presentation. This is the Haven at Paradise. It's a preliminary plat. We're here tonight for the extension for the planning commission review and approval, and it just stops right here at the planning commission. It doesn't go forward to city council. So this is agenda item 3A subdivision 2021-01, a request by JR Engineering for a two-year extension of the preliminary plat that was approved for 35.77 acres north of King's Crown Road for a 24-lot residential subdivision in the suburban residential zone district. So the original Haven at Paradise preliminary plat was subdivision 19001, and it was in the SR zone. Nothing has changed in terms of the area of the parcel that we are discussing tonight, its location, and its proposed development. It is in the top of Paradise master plan, and the preliminary plat was reviewed against that master plan. In 2019, it was a request by William Brown, Paradise Estates, Inc., and since that time, Mr. Brown has passed on. And his daughter is online and available to answer any questions if you have any questions, as is the engineer, JR Engineering, Mike Bramlett. So the original planning commission hearing on the preliminary plat was on March 14, 2019, and April 4, 2019, was when city council approved this preliminary plat. There is the location of the preliminary plat and the 24-lot subdivision, and a closer look at the zoning map, which shows the SR residential zone district, which is the pale yellow. This is the aerial photo of the site. It's a beautiful site here in the city. And another aerial perspective of the site, which shows a little bit, gives you an idea of some of the steep slopes on this site. That's King's Crown to the south, and the intersection that you see in the lower quarter of this image is also King's Crown. So that's the intersection of King's Crown coming in and then going to the right, King's Crown Road. So this is a site photo taken in 2019 of the entrance to this 35-acre site. This is the top of Paradise master plan, and the Haven 24-lot subdivision is shown in the circle in red. So this was the master plan that the preliminary plat was originally approved against. So this is the approved preliminary plat, and it's not showing up very well on my screen, but we did send out with the packet the preliminary plat that showed the lot configuration. Also showed the open space, which is 12 acres roughly on the right-hand side. And then it shows the two proposed public roads, Blue Haven Place here and Red Haven going up, both cul-de-sacs servicing these 24 lots. And then there is one lot down here, just as you come in, Blue Haven, which will be for drainage. So the original preliminary plat was reviewed with section 1720 of the municipal code, and we look at things like the layout of the lots and the information that the surveyor shows on there. We also look at a preliminary utilities report. We look at variances. We look at hillside lots and the drawing itself. So these are some of the things that we looked at way back in 2019, and we, nothing has changed. I just wanted to show you this to let you know that there was an in-depth and detailed review, and it did comply with all of our requirements and design standards for a preliminary plat. The original preliminary plat and this extension of that preliminary plat was referred to the Public Works Department Utilities and various internal and external agencies for comment. We did not receive any written comment or concerns prior to this public hearing. We did a public notice, just like we did in 2019, and we notified everyone within 150 feet by letter in the mail. And the site was also posted with a sign. The original 2019 preliminary plat approval and design went to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board for their review, and they recommended fees in lieu of parkland, although they request that if the applicant is willing that that 12-acre site be dedicated as parkland, but it was not a requirement. Otherwise, they accepted fees in lieu. We did not send the extension back to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. There's no change to the recommendation for fees in lieu. So tonight, well, actually, March 14, 2019, was the original public hearing, and the planning commission at that time did recommend approval of the preliminary plat. So tonight, we're here because there has been a request to approve a two-year extension of the Haven at Paradise preliminary plat, so that it would expire on April 4, 2023. That concludes my presentation, Mr. Chairman. As I mentioned, Mike Bramlett from JR Engineering is online, as is Andrea Rodriguez, who is the property owner, if you have any questions.
At this point, do the applicants that are online have any other comments they'd like to make? If you, if you do, please speak up now. Mike, you wanna go first, or Andrea, either one?
I would defer to Andrea or Andrea if she's got anything to say. I just answer any questions you have.
Yeah, I don't have anything to add either. Thank you, Sally.
Very good. Thank you. At this point, planning commission, any questions of the staff and the applicant? If you, if you do, please say you'd like to, and we'll let you talk. Anybody out there in TV land or?
So do you wanna open?
I have a comment. Okay, go ahead, whoever was talking, sorry.
No, at this point, the planning commission asks questions of the staff and applicant, and then the next item is public.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I hate to be the designated nitpicker here, but matter which Laura does address, does address on the first page of the staff report. Let me read the first two sentences of 17.20.09 of our municipal code. Approval of the preliminary plat shall be valid for no longer than 24 months. One-year extensions of time may be applied for and writing to the planning commission. It does appear that extensions, since it has an S on it, it's anticipated that there can be multiple extensions, but this language is about as clear as I can imagine writing it, that the extensions are for one year at a time. I have no problem with extending it. I think the subdivision, the preliminary subdivision was fine. I can understand why additional time would be needed with Mr. Brown's death last year not being, obviously, lots of commercial difficulties could have arisen. I have no problem whatsoever extending for a year, and given the circumstances here, very likely, unless something dramatic has changed, very likely, I'd feel the same way in another year, so. But the ordinance seems absolutely explicit, absolutely clear. Maybe there's an argument about the last time a question of extension came up. Here, I don't see that there is one. I understand that reading the ordinance as it written means that if, if the owner requires the full two years, you will have to have asked, you'll have to hear this again come next winter or spring, but that's just where the ordinance is written. So I don't really see any way around it unless we just wish to ignore the language of the ordinance. But as I say, I do have no problem substantively with the matter, and I hope, hope things can proceed.
Thank you, Lee. Sally Riley, do you have any input that you can give to us on that that would justify having a two-year extension?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It has been typical that we do two one-year extensions for a preliminary plat. It takes a long time for the, the developer to be able to have a set of construction drawings that get approved, and with our winters, it's hard to develop during a short construction season. So staff has typically requested an extension for two years. I understand that the code is pretty black and white, but we do not think that this is an unreasonable exception, and think of it as two one-year extensions.
Anybody else on the commission would like to have some comments about this? Anybody out there? And anybody here? What would prevent us from granting two one-year extensions to run concurrently?
Nothing. You can reword the motion to say just that.
At this point, we'll now open public comment, which is next. Do we have anybody signed up or anybody that would like to speak concerning this? Now is the time.
So, Mr. Chairman, we have one hand up in, online, and that's Crystal 48, and I'm gonna bring her in to speak.
Please.
Crystal, you should be able to speak now. If you unmute.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. I'm a neighbor up the road. My name is Crystal Schnur. We have a property just directly to the east and kinda in between the development and Rampart Range Road. We have a significant amount of trespassers entering our property, probably at least one a day, going from Woodland Park up to Rampart Range Reservoir. And despite our efforts of putting many and many signs up and fixing our fencing, it doesn't seem to help, and I was wondering if this land is gonna sit vacant for two years, if possibly there could be some better signage and maybe a better, like, chain across the road that just says private property. That's all I have to say.
Anybody have any input, Sally, or any things, words of wisdom you can add?
I think the best approach for us is if Crystal can call City Hall and our code enforcement official can meet with her, and we can explore options.
Does that sound good, Crystal? That okay with you?
Um, yeah, that sounds fun.
Laura, do we have anybody else who wishes to speak?
Catherine McPhee, let me. Go ahead, Catherine.
Hi, I just had a quick, I don't, I'm like Lee, I don't have a problem with the extension for the year, but my only question is if we extend it now, automatic two years, if the code is to change when we do the municipal code later this year or early next year, they would have basically a grandfathered extension for two years, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Just food for thought. That's all I had. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No.
I guess I would mention that this is probably a very good candidate for a code change as we go through the process. After our last meeting, I kinda went through some of our other provisions in the code, and they do vary. It'd be very helpful to have them consistent with how we approach the extensions. Just wanted to mention that we should, we should change the code.
Anybody else? If not, we'll close the public comment. Any other comments from the applicant?
I have none.
Okay.
Andrea?
No, I don't have it.
Thanks, Andrea. Any final questions from staff, from the Muskeyes up here? And gal? Oh. Anyway. Okay, deliberation time. Anybody got any comments? Anybody wanna talk about this? Anybody have any suggestions?
Mr. Chair. Based on the reading of the existing ordinance for the one-year extension, I would be in favor of the one-year extension, but I don't feel it's our place to go against the written code. Mr. Larson indicated we need to have a code change to maybe make that a two-year extension, but at this point, I don't think it's our position to go beyond what our code. We're here to enforce the code and interpret that, and so I would support a one-year extension at this time with a one-year follow-up or whatever happens in the future, but I cannot support a two-year based on the written code.
Other committees?
I'll second that if that's a motion.
No, it's not. We're not done. You have a deliberation. Okay?
Okay.
It's okay, Lee.
Ken, you wanna make that a motion?
No. Sally, has there ever been a situation before in the, in the last number of years that we've granted two years, even though the code said one?
Yes, we've done that a number of times with the Paradise of Colorado preliminary plat, but I would suggest if planning commission members are uncomfortable, then I would suggest that you consider the one-year approval, and then the applicant can come back next year if we haven't changed the code to two years.
I agree with that.
Any other comments? Lee, now, it's your turn.
I move that the applicant's request for extension be approved for one year until April 14, 2022. Second.
Call for the question.
Who was the second?
That was me, Larry.
Larry, okay. Thank you, beginning with Ken Hartsfield.
Yes.
Lee Brown.
Yes.
Al Bungy.
Yes.
Ellen Carrick.
Yes.
Eric Disman.
Yes.
Vicki Good.
Yes.
Larry Larson.
Yes.
John Devoe.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to item B, sub 2021-02 Brecken Heights Final Plat. A request by Brecken Hills LLC applicant, Mark McNabb, property owner, to plat 13.09 acres into a four-lot subdivision at 19569 East US 24 in the multifamily residential suburban and the community commercial zones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a brief presentation. If you could put up the PowerPoint again. Thank you. All right, I'm gonna ask the planning commissioners to mute your screen. Or mute your mics so that I, I don't keep getting different images. I can't see the screen. So can you give me the PowerPoint presentation? All right.
You got a window you gotta close. There you go.
All right, this is the Brecken Heights Final Plat. Tonight is March 11, 2021, and it is the planning commission public hearing. The city council public hearing for this preliminary or final plat is on April 1, 2021, and that has been scheduled. So this is a request by Brecken Hills LLC, who is the applicant, and Mark McNabb, who is the property owner, and Mark McNabb and his assistant Diana are both here in the audience tonight. And this is for a final plat, a four-lot subdivision plat of 13.09 unplatted acres at 19569 East US Highway 24 in the multifamily residential suburban MFS and the community commercial CC Zone District. So this is an aerial showing the 13.09-acre site. It is immediately west of the Sun Valley Park that you can see here, immediately south of an unplatted tract of land here, Highway 24, immediately to the west, and the Woodland Village Mobile Home Park, and then to the south is some commercial properties. Again, the television screen, I hope you can see it better on your computers at home, but the existing conditions, this is looking from the highway into the site, and you can see some of the topography. You can see some of the natural vegetation and some of the slopes. So this does have some 30%, slopes in, within the site. This is the 2010 comprehensive plan, showing you the designations for this property. You can see that the east, two-thirds of this site is multifamily, and the one-third adjacent to the highway is a commercial designation in the plan. And then this is the zoning, which reflects the comprehensive plan. You can see that the mustard color is multifamily residential suburban MFS, and the area adjacent to the highway is community commercial. And you can also see the surrounding zones. The pale yellow is suburban residential. There's more multifamily to the north and service commercial to the west. This is the approved preliminary plat. It was platted in three parcels, track A, B, and C. Track A is planned for future townhome development. Track B is going to be a future dedication to parkland with the townhome plating of track A. And track C is the community commercial tract. It was shown in the preliminary plat as one lot, but the applicant has submitted his final plat to cut that in half, and it would pretty much follow the boundary of this pedestrian access to this commercial, or to this city park dedication that will be done with the townhome plat. So that's one of the only major differences between the approved preliminary plat and the final plat that the applicant has submitted. So this is the final plat. You can see here's Lot 1, which is going to be the townhome development. Lot 2 is going to be the parkland dedication. Lot 3 is a small commercial space here at the north, lot at the north end. And Lot 4 is going to be another commercial space to the south. This final plat was submitted with the packet and is available for viewing online as well. So staff did review this final plat application pursuant to 17.24, which are the final plat requirements in the City of Woodland Park Municipal Code. What those requirements are, are the preparation of the plat by a surveyor, the drawing, information that needs to be on the plat, and any supplemental materials that needed to be submitted with a minor subdivision. We also reviewed it with improvement guarantees, chapter 17.28. There are no improvement guarantees proposed with this plat or required with this four-lot simple plat. We also looked at the design standards. Again, the, this is only a four-lot plat that cuts this property into four simple lots. We looked at the lot configurations and easements and those types of design standards that are applicable to a four-lot subdivision. We also looked at chapter 17.44 improvements. There are none proposed with this four-lot plating. There will be improvements proposed with the townhome plat, and we will deal with those improvements at that time. So staff did find that in this review, we did see conformance with the municipal code for a four-lot plat. We did refer this final plat to everybody within 150 feet. We referred the notice of tonight's meeting. The site posters have been on-site for the required amount of time, and tonight's agenda was posted in the courier. We sent the final plat application to various different city departments, Public Works, the City Engineer Utilities, Parks and Rec, the Fire Department, IREA, and no concerns were received. We did send the preliminary plat to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and they are all for accepting the park dedication of that track B portion or Lot 2 portion of this final plat. We did not send this final plat to the Advisory Review Board because there is no change. The dedication of that parkland will happen with the townhome plat, and the park fees will be resolved with the townhome plat and the residential portion of this development, which is forthcoming. So tonight is the planning commission review of this final plat, and staff does recommend that the planning commission recommend to city council approval of Brecken Heights, the four-lot final plat of 13.09 acres, based on the findings of conformance to the subdivision regulations and the approved preliminary plat as described in the staff report and as presented at public hearings. That concludes my presentation, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is here in the audience and is available to answer any questions.
The applicant wanted to speak about this? Okay. 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 At this point then, we'll have the commission ask the applicant and staff if any questions you may have. Anybody have any questions? If not, I do. When this came before us, before when it was a truck stop, if you recall back then, here's what the concerns were, the people that lived on the road back behind that were concerned about the park section of the parking along that road because a lot of people walk, walk their dogs in the morning and that, and I think at the time they had, I think one of the considerations was some kind of a parking lot so that, that people that would use that facility there for the park part of that would not be parking along that road, cars lined up and down on both sides. I remember that was a concern when we, when we looked at that once before. Secondly, the congestion that would have been with everybody turning in at that intersection to, to go back into that, because that's right there at the light, I believe. And thirdly, the connection between the commercial and be able to get to that from the, from the residential area and just acceleration lanes or whatever you're gonna have doing out there. She said there was nothing done, but we talked about that in much detail when that was proposed a number of years ago.
Mark, Mark, can I get you to come up to the microphone?
I'm Mark McNabb, I live in Woodland Park. So the answer to that would be that C dot, we've gone through the whole process with them, and they're not allowing us, we weren't planning on it anyway, using the, the access to the residential for the commercial. So the only way you're gonna be able to get into this commercial is a future C dot, right in, right out off of Highway twenty-four, several hundred yards down past the light.
Okay.
That's the only way in.
That's the only way to the commercial section? Okay.
So the other's set in stone, it's all been calculated, C dot's approved it, and this other entry, future entry's been pre-approved by them years ago.
Okay.
And they're willing to, you know, give us the permit when the time comes.
In the parkland? For parking on that?
The parkland? There's gonna be parking, and I don't know if it shows on any of the information you receive, but on the future C dot, right in, right out, where we come in, we're gonna have a Hammerhead tee right at the trailhead, so people can park there and go down the trail. The only other parking, of course, would be on Sun Park.
Yeah.
On the other side.
Okay. So there is provision for that right there? Very good, thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question for staff, and I, I think you, you may have answered it earlier, Laura, when you said that the dedication for the parkland property will happen at the time of final plating for the townhome project, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Would it be appropriate to go ahead and make a note on this particular plat, identifying that lot two will eventually be dedicated to the city for parkland? And also wasn't there?
Yeah, it's not required, it's part of the preliminary plat, there is a note for that, and then typically the parkland dedication only occurs when there's a residential development. And that's why we're waiting for the townhome plat to come in, we're pretty certain it's coming in. I don't think a note is necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Do we have any public comments on this, from a public? Yes. Come on up here, you get to talk. Name, address, serial number, and all that good stuff.
Pete Roberts, Woodland Park, and we live in the neighborhood. So several questions. Will the townhomes be single-family detached units?
Or duplex?
What does that mean?
So, I'll get you, is it Robert?
Roberts.
Roberts.
Pete Roberts.
Pete, I'm sorry, I'll get you just to say your questions, and then we'll have the applicant come up and rebut, or I can answer questions too.
Okay.
It's just easier.
One question, the, the new park area, does, does it actually connect with the existing parks? So they're contiguous to each other and connect? Okay, and then the, the townhome access, that will be not off Highway twenty-four, but where, where do they access to that?
So, Dave, can you put up the PowerPoint again? So we'll go from the last question, Pete, so the townhome access will be off of Morning Sun down here on the south end, right here, where there is that little spur. You can see that little spur right there, I know it's really hard to see.
You make that any bigger?
I could.
So where is this in relation to the, the office building there?
It's actually behind it.
The office building is right across the parking lot.
Yeah, it's right down here.
Really?
Hard to see.
Okay.
There you go.
So, and that's not that clear either, but anyway, the office building, so here's the little spur, and that comes off of Morning Sun, and this is Morning Sun right here.
So the little spur is behind the office buildings?
Yes. Yeah, the office buildings are kind of down here.
Okay.
So that is the third question, the second question was the park area connection to Sun Valley Park to the east. So, so the park connection is this boundary right here. So there is, the park comes right here, and, and this little connection right here is adjacent to the park. And this all will be part, and then there will be a trail right down here to connect to the sidewalk along Highway twenty-four, and there, there will be a trail within this park.
So where was that Hammerhead parking?
Down at the south end, oh, the Hammerhead parking?
For the, yeah.
That Mark was talking about?
Yeah. It's, it's up in that area, okay?
Right there.
Right there, right there.
Okay. And, do we, do we anticipate or know what type of commercial will go in these spaces? Well, do we have any idea what type of commercial could go there or anticipate?
Yep, so Pete, it's zoned, community commercial, and there's a whole list of uses that would accommodate community commercial.
Okay, well, for years and years, people have been concerned about a gas station going there on the corner at the red light. Is that possible?
No, without a sound change.
Let me, let me just.
Would it be allowed by code?
I have to look it up, hang on, I don't have it memorized.
We turned it down once.
Pardon?
We turned it down once.
I can.
Go ahead, Sally.
I can add, yes. It's a conditional use permit for a gas service station, so it would go through a public hearing process.
They'd have to come back here before it happened.
Okay.
Because it's conditional use, and come to the same board and have another public hearing.
Okay, there might be more people here for that.
Just a few.
Yeah, but we've not had any inquiries for a gas station.
Okay.
So, we've had Dunkin' Donuts.
One of the things that the entrance was put back behind that building was that there was a concern before of people getting stacked up, coming up to the light, and that being congestion there, and that's the reason was going back there, so that could build up back there and not affect that intersection.
Okay.
Because we're kind of reinventing what we went through before with that one time. We've been there before, yeah.
All right.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, Mr. Chairman, we do have one hand up, Mr. Mike Nakai, shall I bring him in?
If, if you want to.
Go ahead, Mike.
Can you hear me?
We can.
All right, thank you, commissioners, for letting me speak, Mike Nakai, Woodland Park. I just have two questions, the first is for Laura and the applicant, it may be an easy one. On the first page of your presentation, you list, if I read this correctly, you list Mark McNabb as the property owner. Is that, is that actually true, or is it still the gentleman from Georgetown, Texas? So that's the first question, and the second question is, I'm trying to understand what is the reason for changing the, breaking it up into four, you know, four lots, you know, where it was three during the preliminary plat? So why was that one lot split in half? I didn't, I didn't catch that, those are my two questions.
So I'll, I'll get Mark to come up and answer both, he can answer whether he's the owner or not, and he can answer the design.
The technicality is my LLC owns it, and it's not Brecken Hills, it's Brecken Heights LLC. So that's who legally owns the property. The other question is, because of the C dot entry that's gonna be coming in, the right in, right out, it makes a lot of sense to divide that commercial into two pieces, since we're not gonna go in there with some big outfit in the first place. It, it makes sense to divide it so that what's on each side of that is a different entity where it comes into the Hammerhead.
And are you still planning on parking in that area for the park area?
Yes.
On that right in, right out?
Yes, it'll be at a dead end, where you come in on the right end, you'll come almost to the property line of lot one and two, and there'll be a Hammerhead parking spot there for the trail. There'll be plenty of room before you get to that to turn left or right into the two different parcels.
And I may have missed that, is the number of parking spots there listed in your final plat here?
It's not a formal parking with a certain amount of parking spaces. It's a typical trail-type head parking, I guess you would say, like a cul-de-sac would be. So there's plenty of room there, I'd say you could probably park six, seven cars at a time.
Okay, thank you, that's all ahead.
Thanks, Mike.
I have a question, John, Mr. Chairman, Ellen. Will that, will that parking then be paved, or will that be dirt and rock type parking?
Probably will be paved because coming into the two commercial spots is paved, so it doesn't make sense not to pave it to the parking area.
Okay.
It will be required to be paved.
Yeah, there you go, the boss says it has to be paved. And I'm very picky about what's going to go in there, so, and I like to be in control. So it will be something that's very good for the neighborhood. We had one person that was interested in a possible drive-through coffee snack thing, like is becoming very popular. Don't know if he'll do that or not, but commercial, things like that, we would have very low traffic type. We thought about some minimal apartment buildings, smaller apartment buildings in there, which would also be good because it would fit in with the residential.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anything else we want to discuss about this at this point? Okay.
No more hands.
We went through our public comment, we've done that already, we've had the rebuttal. Any final questions from you folks that would like to address either the applicant or staff? Okay, at this point, we'd be, if nobody else has any comment, be entertaining a motion and a second. That would be the normal thing to do.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just want to note that the applicant has revised the final plat and has incorporated the four conditions that I had listed on page six of the staff report, so that the revised recommendation is simply that the Planning Commission recommend that City Council approve the Brecken Heights Final Plat based on the findings of conformance to the subdivision regs and the preliminary plat as described in the staff report and as presented at public hearings, subject to no modifications. So that it be approved as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Larry. Have a, need a second?
Second.
That was Al?
Yep.
Ready for the roll, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, we'll begin with Lee Brown.
Yes.
Al Bungy.
Yes.
Ellen Carrick.
Yes.
Eric Disman.
Yes.
Vicki Good.
Yes.
Larry Larson.
Yes.
John DeVoe.
Yes.
And Ken Hartsfield. Unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. This was Thursday night, it'd be a football game, we'd get home in time, so we don't have to worry about that, right? Any other, any other subjects for what we're doing here tonight? Any reports from, do you have some reports for us?
Um, I think Sally does.
Yes, thank you so much, just a brief update of where we are with the comprehensive plan, and hopefully all of you have had a chance to go on the website and take the first survey. There are now a second survey that was just posted today regarding housing, so we would like your input on that survey, as well as anyone from the community, if they're listening. We are working on establishing the subcommittees, eight of the subcommittees, and this morning, John DeVoe and I went through your choices, and I'd like to just inform you all of which subcommittee you will be working with. Number one is the Land Use, Growth Housing, Diversity, and Community Character Subcommittee, and Ken Hartsfield is assigned to that one. Number two is the City Finances, Economic Development, and Tourism, and we have Al Bungy assigned to that one. The third subcommittee is the City Utilities, Water and Wastewater. Larry Larson will be serving on that subcommittee. Transportation and Drainage will be John DeVoe's Subcommittee. For Public Safety, Emergency Management, and Resiliency will be Lee Brown. For Parks, Trails, and Open Space and Community Sustainability will be Vicki Good. And then we do not have another planning commissioner for the Community Wellbeing, Education, Health, Recreation, and Aging in Place. But lastly is the Arts, Culture, and Historic Preservation or Heritage Group, and Ellen Carrick will serve on that subcommittee. So thank you for sending your choices, we'll be assigning council members, and I'm recruiting various citizens. The way in which we're doing the citizens is I'm calling those citizens who served ten years ago on these committees, and a number of them have said, yes, we want to continue. Lot has changed over the last ten years and want to give their input as to our future. And then a number of Parks, Trails, and Open Space Board will be split between Parks, Trails, and Open Space and Recreation. The Historic Preservation Committee will be helping out with the Arts, Culture, and Historic Preservation. The Utilities Committee will be helped out with water and wastewater, and so on. We hope to have about nine people on each subcommittee who will get to work very soon. So the first meeting will be on March twenty-ninth, so that is a Monday evening, mark your calendars, I will be sending out emails to all of you, and the plan is for the subcommittees to meet on the fourth Monday of each month for four, four months. And we will begin with an audit of the existing plan and then brainstorming regarding the action items, goals, and objectives for the future. Any questions about? Any questions about the, uh, next steps for the Comprehensive Plan? Okay, and then the only other thing I have to report is there will not be a meeting two weeks from tonight on, uh, March twenty-fifth. But we will use that week, uh, um, the week following that on March twenty-ninth for the subcommittee meetings. Uh, we do have cases in, uh, April. So, uh, first meeting in April is, uh, planned and scheduled. Thank you.
Anything else for the good of the order? Anybody, uh, out in TV land?
No hands raised.
Okay, very good. I need a motion for adjournment?
I make a motion to be adjourned.
Need a second? To Bungie?
Second.
We're adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, everybody for coming.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.
Take care.
Bye.
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 Under an hour.